Thanks for having me today as part of the retreat. It's been good to be with you at these events over the years and provide updates on the projects that we're working on and things that are upcoming. And that's really what we wanted to do today. There's a number of projects we wanted to provide some updates on, engage you all in some conversation. Let you know where certain things stand and kind of what next steps are. So hopefully this presentation will take care of that. And I've left some time for questions and discussions at the end. First of all, just a quick recap of the pedestrian improvements project. You're all very familiar with this. We've completed several phases and I just wanted to revisit it quickly because it really does lead us into a bigger discussion about the the brick project. As everyone will recall, the pedestrian improvements project really grew out of the town's comprehensive pedestrian plan. That was completed several years ago using funding through the DOT through North Carolina Department of Transportation. We worked with the town to develop a comprehensive pedestrian plan, townwide plan. And coming out of that, we have been very grateful to work with you on several several implementation projects. They came out of the comprehensive plan and one of those was the installation of the sidewalks and bike lanes and drainage improvements throughout Duck Village. But you'll recall that the overall project was was the geographic extents range from Four Seasons north to Ship's Watch. And in that area, we've worked for several years to plan, design and construct sidewalks and bike lanes. Along with associated improvements like new crosswalks, some some implementation of median and refuge islands. A couple of sections of connecting shared use path, looking at grading and drainage. And then as we got into the fourth phase of this, and I'll get into the phasing in just a minute. But the fourth phase of the sidewalk project included a living shoreline project. Where the sidewalk was going to be immediately adjacent to Currituck Sound. And then most recently, we have brought into the equation the potential to elevate the roadway through an additional funding source. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as we move on, but hopefully this just as a quick refresher of the overall sidewalk and pedestrian improvements throughout Duck Village. Again, the project has been done in phases with planning and design work occurring essentially during spring, summer and fall of each year. And construction occurring in the off season of 2018, 19 and 20. Phase one of the sidewalk projects really focused on the section of roadway. From Four Seasons to Duck Deli on the east side, putting in a five foot wide sidewalk on the east side of the roadway up to Duck Deli. There were also associated improvements, as I've mentioned, the crosswalks and the signage. And one, one section of shared use path connection as part of phase one, that was all constructed in the spring, completed before spring of 2018. Phase two then moved to the west side of the roadway and really focused on the section from Aqua up to Cook Drive. Installing sidewalks on the west side of the road. And again, the associated related improvements, the paving pavement markings, the signage. Other things to support the sidewalk improvements project. Phase three, we then switched back to the east side at the north end of Duck Village, going from Duck Deli up to Ship's Watch with a five foot wide sidewalk on the east side of the roadway. And that was completed in spring of 2020. We then moved into design of phase four, which was to put a sidewalk on the west side of the roadway. Essentially between Duck Deli and Ship's Watch, that last section. On the west side to match what had been done in phase three on the east side. As we, you know, worked on that design, we realized that, that, you know, the sidewalk right there is very close to the sound. It's subject to flooding. It's subject to debris being left on the roadway and on the sidewalk from the flooding. And so we, we incorporated to protect and prevent some erosion from occurring. We incorporated the living shoreline improvements into the planning and design of phase four. As we got close to the the final design and permitting stage for phase four. I'll, I'll talk about that in a minute. We realized that, that, that there was a potential to add some additional funding to the project, as I've mentioned, to elevate the roadway. And really make this a resiliency project that helped reduce the flooding threat. Not only to the sidewalks, but also to the roadway and really look at a comprehensive project that involved the sidewalks, the living shoreline and the roadway elevation. So at some point in the fall of last year, we discussed this with council. And the decision was made to to put a hold on phase four to see if we could get that additional funding. It's federal funding through the Federal Emergency Management Agency. And the, the funding program is called Bill Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities. We call it BRIC. Put those improvements on hold. See if we could get the brick funding and to make this a more comprehensive project. I'm going to see if I can make my point or work here. So again, just to recap, this was really the phase four project, the installing the sidewalk from Resort Realty to Sunset Grill. The orange lines that you see throughout the rest of the village are the prior phases that had already been constructed. And we were really focused on this section for phase four, west side sidewalk. A little bit more detail there. Again, the east side was completed in in phase three. We had installed sidewalks on the east side of the roadway. And the idea was to pick up here and install new sidewalk on the west side concurrent with shoreline improvements. And as phase one was originally scoped, that included replacing the revetment that's there, improving the rocker revetment that was there. And doing a living shoreline project along this stretch of shoreline, but leaving the road at its current elevation. So coming in and installing this yellow line is the sidewalk. Doing some revetment and living shoreline improvements, connecting to this existing pier. We've coordinated with the owners of the pier on the design there. Again, the red line is the east side phase three completed sidewalks. And so, and so phase four came up all the way north to Sunset Grill to connect the sidewalks to the crosswalk and pedestrian refuge that was installed as part of phase three. And again, those shoreline improvements. And the shoreline improvements as part of phase four originally were again, replacing the revetment to help prevent erosion of the shoreline. Developing a living shoreline to help reestablish some marsh and help dissipate wave energy, minimize the damage that flooding could do. But the living shoreline and the sidewalk project in and of itself wouldn't prevent the flooding. So when the water came up to a certain elevation, it was still going to flood the sidewalk, flood the roadway. But hopefully the living shoreline would have protected and prevented some erosion. This is sort of a cross sectional detail of the original idea for phase four for the sidewalks and the living shoreline. So this is a cross section of the roadway looking south. And this sidewalk and bike lane and infiltration trench was the phase three project that had been completed. And, you know, the dune slopes up pretty steeply there and their houses and neighborhoods on the west, on the east side of the roadway there. So again, we're looking south. With the two travel lanes and then phase four would have come in and mimicked that on the other side of the roadway. Installed the sidewalks, the drainage improvements and the bike lane. And then these living shoreline enhancements that would have included a sill, a breakwater sill out in the water to dissipate wave energy. Replacing the stone revetment that is there now and increasing the height of that revetment. And then coming in and doing some select fill, not for the whole area, but but doing some select sand fill and marsh planting. To allow that living shoreline, reestablish the marsh there and complement the marsh that that still exists for a portion of that stretch. This is an aerial view of the phase four project area. Again, phase three installed sidewalks. Along the east side of the roadway, phase four would have come in and put a sidewalk along the west side. Replaced the existing rocker vetment that is there. Installed this timber sill and it's really a series of sill. It's not a continuous structure, but a series of timber sills. Largely in the southern portion of the project to protect the existing marsh. There's, there's still, as you know, a pretty well established marsh there. And the sill would help protect that marsh. And then in the northern part of the project, the sill would allow us to come in. And do some select fills, some select marsh planting to reestablish the marsh in that area to kind of reflect. The, the marsh that still exists in the southern, southern segment of this, of this project area. As we got close to final design and preparing to submit permit and and move into construction of phase four. This happened. This is. This might be February, but it was early in 2020. No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I can't remember exactly the timing, but this, this flooding event occurred that brought this all to the fore. And kind of concurrent with this, the town became aware of this new funding program, this BRIC program through FEMA, which is a new federal grant program. Designed to fund and construct resilient infrastructure. And so this was, this was where we came in and said, you know, the, the sidewalk improvements are needed with their, with their, you know, when we've demonstrated success with the prior phases. The living shoreline as proposed would help minimize erosion, help mitigate flooding wave energy. Help prevent some of the debris that gets cast across the roadway, but it wouldn't really prevent the flooding. You know, if, if unless we elevate the roadway, if the water elevation comes up, this is the situation we're going to be in. And at this stage, we had the discussions with town staff and town council and decided let's, let's put phase four on hold. Try to get the brick funding in place and really make this a resiliency project that meets the town's pedestrian bicycle goals. And also its resiliency and sustainability goals in terms of minimizing and reducing the occurrence of this flooding of the roadway. So that's really how how phase four of the sidewalk project morphed into a bigger, more comprehensive resiliency project. That is the, the North Duck Village sidewalk, living shoreline and NC 12 resiliency project. The project now has three main elements. If you'll recall, when I initially discussed phase four. I pointed out the sidewalk improvements and the living shoreline improvements. And those have remained as part of this brick project. But the key element that has been added is the elevation of the roadway throughout this project area. So if you'll recall in the previous graphic from phase four, we were replacing this rocker vetment. And then the, the roadway elevation kind of dipped down. And the sidewalk and road were actually at a lower elevation than the peak of this revetment. Under the proposed BRIC project, we are proposing to elevate that roadway to approximately the level of that, of that revetment. Install some, some drainage infrastructure, some storm chambers to help prevent stormwater flooding throughout the area. This would necessitate removal and replacement of the, of the phase three walks so that we can elevate this cross section. Install the phase four sidewalks. And still do the living shoreline and the living shoreline really hasn't changed. We're still talking about a sill with a. And some, some limited fill and marching to reestablish the marsh there. So again, this comprehensive project. And when we talked to the state, to the funding agency about this, we kind of described everything that was going on. And the advice that we got and what we came to council with was, you know, you really ought to, these are great projects. You've got the living shoreline. You've got the sidewalk. The brick could come into play and help you elevate the roadway. But the most successful way to present this is as a single comprehensive project. So don't advance the shoreline or the sidewalks and then come back and do the brick as the road project in isolation. Let's really show this as a, as a comprehensive project with three key elements and and propose it for funding that way. So that's how we structured it. And showed this in the, in the funding application to the state. Again, this is a revised aerial graphic, just emphasizing how the, the brick project is, is a. Kind of a morphed adaptation of phase four. Again, we, we will need to replace the sidewalks on the east side of the roadway. Install new sidewalks on the west side of the roadway. And then still do this living shoreline that involves the series of sills, avoiding submerged aquatic vegetation to the extent that we can. Protecting the marsh here in the southern section of the project area and reestablishing some of the marsh. In the northern section, in the northern portion of the area of the, of the project area. We've got a series of three slides here that might be a little bit difficult to see, but I'm going to, I'm going to talk through them and hopefully it becomes clear because it shows. The, the proposed benefit of the roadway elevation relative to the hundred year flood elevation. So this is a profile of NC 12 in the southern portion of the project area. This is Cook Drive, if you will, down here on the southern end and Dune Road right here. The existing roadway elevation is this bottom line here. And you can see it's fairly low in the project area. And as we get down toward Cook, it elevates a little bit. So, and everybody knows this, the roadway is very low adjacent to the sound. This dotted red line is the hundred year flood elevation, which is four feet. This new line here is the proposed roadway elevation. That we hope to do with the assistance of the BRIC funding. So you can see we're tying in here at a, at a, at a point where the road is already above the hundred year flood plain. Elevating the lower section of the roadway. And I'm a scroll and we're moving north here. So this is Sea Colony Drive. And again, we're looking at roadway profile here. So the existing roadway elevation here is this bottom. Faint line. You can see it's below the base flood elevation of four, which is the dotted red line. And the proposed roadway elevation is out of that hundred year flood plane. This is the final profile graphic tying in back at Barrier Island Station. Where the, where the existing roadway is above the base flood elevation and then slopes down. And again, we were proposing this new roadway elevation to tie in at this elevation above the base flood. So the, the point of those graphics is that, you know, we, we were constrained on either end. We could only elevate the road so much. Because we have to tie in at the north and south without creating flooding problems, north and south. We have to tie into the adjacent neighborhood streets. But the line is, as these profiles show, we've got a project that is capable of elevating the road above the hundred year flood plane. So that is the project we proposed in the BRIC application. It included the replacement of the east side sidewalks. The new sidewalks on the west side, the drainage improvements, the elevation of the roadway and the living shoreline. And that total cost you see here on the, on the very right. With the various funding sources. The town had previously been awarded the tourism board funding for the sidewalk. So that was already in place. The town had previously been awarded from the National Fish and Wildlife Federation, the funding for the living shoreline. So that was already in place and we have now requested this one point seven roughly million. Funding amount through the BRIC program. And all of that to be matched by local funds of 240,000 to get to our project total. And again, this, this sort of combining of all these funding partners, combining the living shoreline, the sidewalk and the roadway elevation into one. Comprehensive resiliency project is the advice we got from the state and that's the way we structured it in the BRIC funding application. This project total, this, this 2.4. Includes construction of all of those items. So everything you've seen in the cross sections and the roadway profiles that I reviewed. The, the sidewalk construction, the roadway construction, the living shoreline. All of that construction activity is included in that project total. The project total also includes fees for design, final design of those, those improvements. Permitting of those improvements, environmental documentation, so NEPA compliance. As well as supporting activities like geotechnical investigations and utility location and plating of easements. But that project total is really a comprehensive number, not just the construction cost. It really is, is the full project design permitting, compliance, bidding, construction administration, really to get to a completed project. This is the, is the total. I point that out because of that total, those, those other items, the non-construction items, the design and permitting and environmental. Total about $300,000 and that's, that's about the total. We, we line item that in the grant application. And we're working right now on a proposal, a contract proposal to the town. We hope to submit that to the town staff next week for consideration by council at your March third meeting to include those services. Because we structured the grant application that way and included those in our cost estimate to the funding agency. Those activities become reimbursable activities. So if you, if the town is successful in getting the BRIC funding. Those design and preliminary work become something that is reimbursable through the grant program. That gets us to the, to the schedule. You know, obviously the, the target here is to be able to be in a place where we can go to construction later this year. Similar to what we've done with the prior phases of the sidewalk, the goal for the BRIC project would be to start construction in fall of 2021. And construct through the winter and be complete by spring of 2022. So how, how do we get there? Backing up a little bit, you'll all recall that in October of last year, we submitted the letter of interest to the state. Saying the town was interested in pursuing the BRIC funds. We got a positive response. And so we submitted the, working with the town staff, we submitted the preliminary application in December of 2020. And the way this application process works is they, the applications go to the state. The state reviews them all and scores them and then submits a package from North Carolina to FEMA. And the, the duck BRIC application was ranked number one out of about, I think it was about 45. Applications that were scored at the state level. Yours was number one. So it was submitted from the state to FEMA. As the state's top request in the BRIC program. And we worked and we did this preliminary submittal and then between December and the end of January. Worked with the town and the state on improving the application, making it even stronger, although it had already ranked number one. Making it even stronger for this submittal to FEMA. So that is into FEMA now as the top recommendation from North Carolina. The anticipated awards are not until July of 2021. And to get us to construction, are you guys? Does that help? Have you been seeing that the whole time? Hopefully not. In order to get us to construction and meet this timeframe of constructing from November to May. We really need to, and we are already working on these final design and permitting activities, those reimbursable activities I mentioned. As part of the program. So we're really, we're really right here in the schedule. And to get us here, we need to, we need to keep the project moving forward even prior to this anticipated notice of award. So again, we're, we're preparing to submit a contract proposal to the town to allow us to start that work. There is a little bit of risk there because we don't yet know for sure that the BRIC funding will be awarded. But if we're going to meet this target, we really need to get started with those activities. Hopefully that, that makes sense and I'm happy to answer any questions about that. Just to emphasize the, the permitting environmental documentation that will be needed to support the project. We will need several permits from federal and state agencies. In addition to an encroachment agreement from NC DOT. We've gotten those for the, the encroachment agreements. We've gotten on all the other phases of the sidewalk work relatively straightforward. I should point out that up until this point, throughout this whole process, the design of phase four, the scoping for the BRIC application. We have coordinated with town staff and DOT and the environmental permitting agencies. On kind of scoping the project and explaining. So everybody kind of knows where this is going. DOT has expressed their support for the project and, and really are acting as a partner in the project. So, you know, the encroachment agreement should, should be relatively straightforward as it has been on the other phases of the sidewalk work. The permitting and the NEPA documentation. Are our schedule items that, that we really can't control. We want to get the permit submitted as quickly as we can. We are currently attempting to engage FEMA on the end, on the NEPA compliance process. We really need to get that going as quickly as possible because the permitting and NEPA documentation are, it's just a process. And, and it could have schedule implications. But again, that's why we want to, want to get, get started and keep it moving as quickly as we can. Does anybody have, I'm going to move to the town park shoreline, but I'm happy to take questions on the BRIC project now or wait until the end.
Chris has done. I got, I got two questions on BRIC. Maybe now's the time to, to, to ask you. The first one is you're going to raise the sidewalk on the west side. Is there any public safety issue with the, the rock? The rock fall there for standpoint of being the same level?
In terms of people maybe falling off?
Falling off, tripping on it, climbing on it?
Yeah, no, we would, we would. That's a great question and it's something that we have, have thought about and considered in the design and, and will be. The, the short answer is no, we, we can address that so that it's not a safety concern, but that's a very good question and something that we did think about when we, when we scoped the project out.
The, the second question has to do with the, the east side and the drainage. Will you have to take out any of the sidewalks and reinstall the sidewalks for that drainage?
The east side sidewalks will have to be removed and replaced in order to elevate the roadway regardless of what we do with the drainage. We will have to remove and replace the east side sidewalks and that, that is included in the cost estimate.
Then in other words, they got to be raised?
They have to be, they have to be raised. Yes. For us to raise the roadway, the, the east side sidewalks have to be raised up.
Thank you. Any additional questions for Chris on the BRIC?
Just a clarifying question, if I could. Could you just remind me what NEPA stands for and the USACE?
Yep, sure thing. Good questions. NEPA is the National Environmental Policy Act. So it's the federal environmental legislation that set up the Environmental Protection Agency. And it establishes certain compliance activities that federal agencies have to go through. So because FEMA is funding the project, that funding by a federal agency will trigger some degree of NEPA compliance. We're currently in, in contact with FEMA, trying to determine exactly what that level of compliance will be. But because there's a funding action there, that federal action trips us into a NEPA compliance. And USACE is the United States Army Corps of Engineers. And there'll be a permitting agency in this and that, that permit by the corps is also a federal action. Typically permits by the corps have their own compliance process. And it doesn't really trigger much applicant developed activity, but with the FEMA funding, there's going to be a, a different, a different. Level of NEPA compliance required here and we just need to coordinate with those two agencies. Thank you.
Let's get any other questions. Chris, I can move on.
Okay. So, yeah, okay. Good on time here. A couple of other projects that, that are ongoing that we've been working on with the town for some time. One is the, is the shoreline at the park. And just wanted to give a, a quick update on. Bear with me here. I'm going to go through a little bit of history and kind of explain where we are now and, and where things will be going from here. You'll recall that initially. When we started about the shoreline at the park, I know this graphic is a little bit difficult to read. Here's the picnic shelter at the park. This is the platform structure here, the gravel paved parking. This is the platform structure here, the gravel paved parking area. And this is the pier coming out into the sound. And here's the boardwalk with the overlook at the south end. The amphitheater is right about here. When we initially started thinking about the shoreline erosion issue, which is particularly acute here, adjacent to the picnic shelter and adjacent to this gravel path, as you all know, we envisioned a project that considered installing timber sills attached to the boardwalk to attenuate wave energy, allow sedimentation on the backside and allow us to come in and do a relatively large sand fill and marsh planting activity in that cove, which, which used to be wetland, has eroded and is now water with a considerable amount of submerged aquatic vegetation. But this was the original concept to protect the shoreline in this areas. These timber sills attached to the boardwalk with this marsh reestablishment. As we talked to the agencies about this, the, the submerged aquatic vegetation in this area pretty much made this, this fill and this marsh reestablishment a non-starter from a permitting perspective. However, the agencies did express a great deal of support, at least initially, for the sill attached to the boardwalk. And they even suggested, you know, why don't you, instead of just limiting the sill to this section of boardwalk, consider a, a larger sill project? Don't, don't do the marsh reestablishment, but consider a long, longer sill project. And so we did a revised plan here. This is the north end of the park with the, this is the pier that goes through the willow out to the platform there. So we did a, a plan set that included again, a series of timber sills with gaps to the boardwalk. Still doing the, the sills in this area, the original project area with the marsh fill in the cove. And went back to the agencies and discussed this with them as a, as a potential alternative project. And the thinking was even, you know, he can't do the fill. These sills will again help attenuate wave energy, minimize shoreline erosion and potentially allow sedimentation on the backside of these sills that could allow some natural marsh creation in those areas. Concurrent with that revised design, we did an updated survey of the submerged aquatic vegetation. That's what SAV is submerged aquatic vegetation throughout the extent of the park. And you can see that in the green, the SAV is quite extensive throughout that entire area. Much of the SAV at the park, particularly in the cove, is invasive species. That's less true in these northern areas, but extensive SAV and extensive SAV habitat. And this, this, this fact of the, that the SAV is there, that there's habitat there has, you know, the agencies came back and said, yeah, well, you know, we like this sill on the boardwalk, but gosh, this is a lot of SAV. If that fills in, we're, we're killing that SAV. So there was additional pushback, not just to the filling and the marsh recreation in the cove, but really to any activity that might impact the extent of this SAV. So we went back to the drawing board again. And this is the, the project as it currently stands. And I apologize, this is oriented differently, completely flipped the, the orientation of this, but this is the south end of the park. The amphitheater is here, the picnic shelter is here. And rather than attach sills to the boardwalk, what the current plan proposes, similar to what we're doing with the brick project, is a series of timber sills with some limited sand fill and marsh planting to help reestablish some of that mar, marsh, minimize impacts to the SAV and protect that shoreline and prevent any further erosion. We've identified a spot here where we might want to consider a stone revetment to protect that little point of land that has a bit of an erosion issue. That's something we would work through with the town, with you on. But this is kind of the revised approach to the sills, bringing them back closer to the current marsh edge and doing some limited sand fill and marsh restoration. And we could carry that really to the north end of the park. Again, rather than establishing the sill on the boardwalk and either filling and planting or hoping to encourage natural sedimentation and marsh development in this area. Really just saying, okay, let's, let's prevent any further retreat of the marsh. Install these sills, look for opportunities where we can come in and do limited fill and limited marsh creation, but really protecting the existing marsh and allowing it to reestablish and not retreat any further. So that, that's really the, the, as, as the, the shoreline at the park project stands now. The idea there is to develop a project that meets the town's resiliency goals in terms of preventing further erosion at the park, protecting the assets that you've invested in at the park and encouraging some degree of living shoreline creation at the park. While at the same time recognizing permitting and agency goals related to SAV. So trying to, trying to achieve a balance there of meeting your resiliency goals and protecting that SAV to the extent that we can. So as currently slated, that project would cost about $238,000 broken down, and these are just construction numbers at this point, but broken down. The, the sill work and the, the minimal marsh restoration. And then that potential stone revetment at the southern end of the park. Again, we would, that's probably an optional item that we want to talk to you about and work through. And you know, we've, we've gotten the plans to that stage and kind of not advanced them any further. The funding for this item is, is in an out year, a couple of years from now. And understanding that anything we do with the sills and with marsh creation is likely to be a permitting challenge. We wanted to focus on the North Duck Village project. Get through that permitting activity, get the construction done there. Take any permitting lessons learned there that might apply to the park, but not try to advance this because the funding was more out year. Any questions on that project before I move to the final one?
Chris, is this a, this is Monica again. Is this a project that if we do go forward with it and it, you know, seems to dovetail with, with, you know, the environmental concerns of the different agencies? Is this something that you could envision would be something that private citizens could, could get involved in down the road if they're looking to restore or, or preserve existing, you know, you know, environmental conditions?
Right.
Is it, would it be a model for, for private use?
I, I think it could be. It would really depend on how similar the, the private property is to what, what's happening at the park in terms of the, the extent and the nature of the erosion. But in, in this, and I think this applies at, at North Duck Village too, what, what, what we do with the shoreline there and what we do with the shoreline at the park. And the, and the, the process that we're going through to balance the goals of the regulatory agencies with the town's goals for resilient living shorelines. I, I think both of serve as model projects. Again, it's not, and model is the right word because it's not a, not something that you can just directly apply in every situation. It would depend upon, again, the nature of the erosion and the, and the, you know, what's happening on an individual property. But the overall approach in terms of what type of sill, how far from the shore, how much marsh recreation versus just letting things take their natural course. I think all of those could serve as models for other properties.
Thank you.
Chris, this is Don. Maybe this is a question for Joe, but are there grants out there for this type of thing?
We'll be keeping our eyes open for that. Resiliency is a hot topic. We are seeing a lot of things popping up out there. Because this isn't a project that we're looking at this immediate fiscal year, we'll have an opportunity to explore some things, see what comes our way. Chris, you have anything to add to that?
No, I, I think that's right. And, and you know, again, I, I, as, as is the case with the permitting, I think, you know, if we can show success with the brick project, that, that involves some, some fish and wildlife funding. You know, there, there may be, that, that may be an example, both from a, the specific measures and the permitting process, but also the funding that, that might come into play here. I think Joe's exactly right that because this is a, a couple of years out, it gives us time to demonstrate success with the brick project and then look for potential funding sources that might support this project.
Thank you.
And Mayor, if I, let me just add one other thing. Just, just to say, this is a, we talked earlier about the, the N Core grant that we, we have targeted for looking at neighborhood flooding. That grant, this, this could be an eligible project. If, if, if we opted, you know, if we were prioritizing this over that, over the neighborhood flooding, this would be an eligible project under that. Cause this was also identified as a very vulnerable area due to some of that coastal erosion that's occurred over the years. So we could, you know, that, that, that would be a funding source. Now, I don't think we can dip in twice to do two projects simultaneously. So, and I, I've really liked the opportunity. We have to work with the neighborhoods on the other. But there may be sources that come out that would allow us to do this separately. That would be a different grant source.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay.
Ron, Chris, I think that's it for questions.
Great. So the last project I wanted to talk about was the environmental assessment that we have performed for the public safety building. Again, this gets back to some of the NEPA discussions that we had earlier. And, and you know, we, we worked with the architect RRM, who worked with the town on concepts for new public safety building. And from that, the town is in conversations with the Corps of Engineers on an adjustment to the lease to allow that building construction. Because of the federal action, again, and, and in this case, it's the federal action of the Army Corps of Engineers adjusting their lease with the town. That's considered a federal action that triggers a NEPA process and environmental compliance process. So we, we were, worked with the town to develop that environmental assessment. This is the, the concept plan that came out of that original effort with, with the town and the architect working with public safety officials in the town. Here's your existing public safety building and the existing lease area on the core property. This is the proposed new building with the new leased area. You can see the two lease areas overlap a little bit. And then the residual of this property was to be turned back to the Army Corps. So in order for the Corps to make this adjustment and, and to make this adjustment to the lease that it has with the town, even though the Corps wasn't paying for this building or building this building themselves, the adjustment to that lease was the action that triggered the requirement for NEPA process. So we developed the environmental assessment that essentially required us to address alternatives, talk about the preferred action and then address potential impacts and mitigation of the preferred action and the alternatives. So in June of 19, we submitted that draft environmental assessment to the town and to the Corps that went through an initial review. And we submitted revisions in September of 19. We got additional comments back in November. And, and again, a revised document at the end of 2019 went to the Corps. And then it would then, then the Corps needed to take action to make the environmental assessment available to the public for their review and comment. But the document was essentially complete at this point. The EA went to the public. We got some very minimal comments during that period and submitted responses to those in June of 2020 that the Corps is incorporating into the final environmental assessment. And this Fonzie, which is finding of no significant impact, the Corps is developing the Fonzie and they will publish it. That, that's still pending and I understand that there are some discussions at the Corps about the eventual disposition of the property that's to be turned back over and the building that's to be turned back over. So there's, there's still some decisions there that have delayed the issuance of the Fonzie. But in terms of the EA for the public safety building and the adjustment to the lease, that is complete. All comments have been addressed. And from that perspective, the, the Corps is ready to issue the Fonzie. But there are obviously these follow-on discussions that have delayed that. Any questions about that process?
I don't see any, Chris.
Okay, I, I think that's.
Hi, Chris, it's Donna Black. Just to update everyone, Mark Presser, who works over at the Corps, has been over and done a walkthrough. And we've given him some plans to look at because they are very interested in maintaining that building. So we, DC was very helpful. We did a walkthrough with them, gave them the plans and they're looking at, they're looking at potential costs to repair things, which you'll hear a little bit about tomorrow. But I don't know if that impacts the EA, Chris, or not.
Yeah, that's a good question. And without seeing exactly what the Corps might or might not want to do, I, I don't know the answer to that. We'll have to see. The EA did, I, I think it probably will affect the EA, the, the EA and the preferred alternative contemplated demolition of that building and restoration of that site to a more natural condition. So if that building is going to remain, it probably will require a modification to the EA. Hopefully not a new process, but simply a modification. But I suspect at least that. Thank you.
I have a question. If I may, if, if it's appropriate, just a general question for Chris. Is this a good time for that?
Sure.
Great. It kind of pulls back a little bit because VHB and specifically you, Chris, have been involved with the town for a very long time and we've, we've been through a lot together over the years. You have a really great historical knowledge of the development of, you know, the park property, the town hall, the pedestrian plan as you, as you've reviewed. And so, and I know that all, every step of the way, your agency has worked with DOT as the central artery that runs through the town is NC 12. And I just, I don't know that you can answer this for me right this minute, but it does seem to be a question that's concerning some citizens regarding our crosswalks. And I know over the years, as I've been involved in the decision-making and taking the recommendations of DOT and just traffic engineering in general, I think that's going to be something that we, I'd like to have a, have a, a quick overview, a review of at some point as to the decision points of our crosswalks. And you know, just how that, how those have developed. We've got folks that think we could use more crosswalks in town and those that think we could use less and want to pin, and specifically sometimes look at our crosswalks as a, and, and our traffic flow as, as a problem up and down the NC 12 corridor. So I just wanted to put that in your, as, and, and to the council in general, just at some point I'd, I'd like to get a review of that, bring folks up to speed on those decision points and, and just the thinking of that at some point.
Sure, we'd be, be happy to do that. I, I think it probably is a, a bigger discussion than, than we have time for here today. You all will say that the, the location and the design of the crosswalks came out of the comprehensive pedestrian plan. And you know, when we look at spacing of crosswalks. And, you know, when we look at spacing of crosswalks at location of crosswalks, there are best practices and guidance that we try to use to the extent that we can. And and all of that is based on crash data for what we call countermeasures, pedestrian countermeasures. And there's a, there's just a wealth of data that says this type of crosswalk reduces crashes by this percent. And this type of crosswalk we've experimented with and it doesn't have the same effect. And there's similar data to say crosswalks, and I'm throwing out numbers here that are just random, but we can get crosswalk spaced two hundred and fifty feet apart didn't noticeably reduce crashes, but crosswalk spaced three hundred feet apart reduced crashes by thirty percent. So I guess where I'm going is all of the recommendations from the pedestrian plan are data based, evidence based, tested countermeasures, and that's where those came from. And and I think it is a bigger discussion and and we'd be happy to have that at some point and talk about how, A, how all of that evolved and where those recommendations came from. And then, you know, even further, are things working? Are there adjustments that need to be made? And what adjustments might be supported by the data and the evidence? I I think that's a a discussion that's well worth having.
Thank you. Definitely just for radar for down the road.
Yep, yep.
Are there any other questions for Chris? Chris, thank you very much. We appreciate you attending our retreat today.
Thanks for having me. My pleasure. My pleasure.
We appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you.